Good morning and welcome to the Wednesday, January 9th, 2019 Board of County Commissioners Meeting. I'm Kate Flavin, Public Information Officer with Sedgwick County. This is our first commission meeting of 2019, and even though the weather is nice and warm right now, it is still winter. So I'd like to bring up Shawn Hornbaker with Sedgwick County Animal Control to talk about pet safety.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Shawn Hornbaker. I'm with Sedgwick County Animal Control Division of Health. And yes, as Kate said, our weather is not as cold as it should be during this time of year, but I thought I would give some tips to the public as well, the Commissioners and everyone here today, just about their animals, especially when they're outside in the cold. I took a few notes. Pet tolerance in the cold is just like people. If you're cold, your pet's cold. And whether it's a long-haired breed, or they're thick-furred, like Saint Bernard or a husky, they're bred for colder climates, but your pets, it's a little different story. They should be kept inside as much as possible when the temperatures are extreme. Have an all-weather shelter if your animal's going to be outside. That could be the dog-eagles or a four-sided shelter. What's really important about a shelter for an animal outside is that it has real thick bedding inside. The walls could be insulated, and that's what we prefer. A lot of our homeowners use their garage sometime for some of their animals that are outside. But the big thing is, is make sure that you change that bedding in your shelter on a regular basis, and that will prevent any type of infections, or just making sure your bedding's clean in there. Taking your pets on errands in cold weather. Well, we all know that hot cars, we have a problem with humans, and pets in hot cars. Well, the same thing is, the same thing happens in cold weather. In cold weather, your car acts like a refrigerator. So like the, like your hot car, it's a furnace. In the cold, just like a refrigerator. So we recommend, don't take your pets on little errands with you somewhere and leave your car there. We also don't recommend that you leave your car running while you're on an errand because your pet's in the car. That's a safety issue. And we prefer that you don't come back out, your pet and your car is gone. Identification during the winter? Make sure that your dog has, your dog or cat has its collar. We prefer microchip, but if your collar has identification on it, that's really great. Sedgwick County Animal Control makes a very great effort when we pick up animals that are running at large in the community, to check those collars and check for, we have scanners in our vehicles for microchips. If we scan the animal, then we will get the information from the microchip company, and have either the microchip company, or if we have the information, we'll call the resident. We'll bring your dog right back to you, or make arrangements to do so. That saves a trip for the animal being down at the shelter. Lastly, I do want to remind everybody that rabies vaccinations for cats and dogs every year, and that dogs have to have a valid license anywhere in Sedgwick County, regardless of city or township. Check your local City Hall for that information, or you can call us at (660) 7070, or even go to our website at animalcontrol@cedric.gov. If you do live in the city limits of Wichita, call (316) 350-3360. But once again, call us, and we'll connect you with the right agency. Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you for being here today and giving us some timely reminders. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
All right, and a few more reminders for today. This morning at 10:30 a.m., there is a reception for outgoing Commissioners Dave Unruh and Richard Ranzaw. It will be here on the third floor of the county courthouse, 525 North Main. And then this evening, there's a public forum for the South Central Kansas Legislative Delegation. That will begin at 6:30 p.m. tonight. Doors open at 6:00. That will be in the jury room here at the courthouse, 525 North Main. Commissioners, on the agenda this morning, you'll have a proclamation declaring January as Human Trafficking Awareness Month, several items related to advisory boards and township boards, and then a report from the Board of Bids and Contracts. So with that, Chairman, I'll hand the meeting over to you.
Thank you, Kate. I appreciate it. And I want to welcome, we've got a full audience today. I appreciate that. I want to welcome the folks that are joining us on TV today, on KPTS, and those that are joining us online. Remind them that if you're just now tuning in, you still have time to make it here, in time for the 10:30 reception that we're going to have later on today. A couple other things that are going on today is Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, and I want to thank all of the folks that are first responders and law enforcement for their sacrifices for our citizens. And just as a reminder, they are sacrifices. We need to remember folks like Kevin Easter, whose anniversary of his passing was yesterday, I believe. And don't forget Deputy Coonsy, who we lost this recently. So keep them in your hearts, minds, and prayers, if you would please. Also today, as Kate mentioned, we are going to be saying goodbye to a couple of our Commissioners. Commissioner Ranzaw, and I said it right today, and I appreciate it. I tried to do that, but for some reason, I keep regressing to pronouncing his name wrong. But today, I'm going to work hard to make sure, since it is his last day, that I say Ranzaw. And also Commissioner Unruh, who we're going to recognize. We do have a public agenda this morning, where I'll invite folks to speak on the public agenda. However, at the end of the meeting, we are going to be presenting some items and remembrances to Commissioner Ranzaw and Commissioner Unruh. And if you want to wait till that point in time to speak, not only will I give each of the Commissioners here on the bench a chance to speak, but I'll also give each of the people in the audience, if you would like to speak at that time. So it's your choice whether you want to do it during public comment, or during, at the end of the meeting today. So with that, I think that that takes care of all of the general announcements that I had this morning. So at this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order for January 9th, 2019. Madam Clerk, next item.
Invitation to be led by W.E. Hamblin, Emporia Avenue Church of Christ. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Let us pray. Our holy Father, we thank you for the safety and peace of a night that we've enjoyed in the light of a new day, a day that may have great and wonderful things for us all. We pray that we may rejoice and be glad in it. We're happy today to be a part of this first meeting of the Commission for this year, and want to ask your guidance and blessings to them, not only today, but throughout the year. And all the governance that is called for from them, we pray that they may have wisdom and good judgment and consideration for all citizens and the benefit and welfare of all creatures of this county. Guide them to that end, if you will, and help us to appreciate and honor them for the time that they give, the sacrifices that they make for the good of others. Thank you today for our law enforcement and first responders. None of us who aren't involved in that really have a full sense of the sacrifices that are made by them and by their families, but we know we're indebted, and we ask you to bless them as we cannot, with safety and good things in their lives, and that their work may be effective for the intended purpose. Today, we thank you for these citizens, many who are here, who've come to share. Thank you for the form of governance that we have that lets us have a voice. And as the agenda progresses, we pray that all will be considerate of others, and that good things will come from every discussion. May any decisions that are being made today be the ones that will be the very best for the most of the citizens of our county. And Father, we ask you to give a special blessing always, to protect our little ones, protect them in our homes and neighborhoods, protect them in their schools and the highways and the byways, and help us to do all we can to create and maintain an environment where they are safe. Thank you for all good things, and we know they come from you. And our will, Father, is that your will should be done on earth as it is in heaven. We pray through Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Hamblin, thank you very much for being with us today. We appreciate it. Next item, please.
Roll call, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Commissioner Ranzaw.
Present.
Commissioner Howe.
Present.
Commissioner Unruh.
Present.
Chairman Dennis.
Present.
Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Thank you. We have several folks signed up to speak on the public agenda today, and as I said, if you're here to speak for Commissioner Ranzaw or Commissioner Unruh, you can do it either now or during the session at the end. But the first person that signed up is Edwin Idee. You approach the podium and state your name for the record, please.
Good morning. My name is Edwin Idee, I.D.E., and I'm not a resident of the area. I live in Newton, North Carolina, but I'm a member of the Berlin Airlift Veterans Association. And my purpose here this morning is to announce to the county and to the city that the Berlin Airlift Veterans will be holding their reunion in Wichita in September, September 26th through the 29th. These gentlemen are obviously a lot older than I am, because they made me their reunion chairman, because of my background in aviation and in communication. But I'm proud to be a part of their group. These gentlemen, as I call them, are the real heroes of the Cold War. It was the, Berlin Airlift was the first battle of the Cold War, when the communists, under General Stalin, isolated the city of Berlin, blockaded it physically by land. And the United States Air Force and the Royal Air Force proceeded to save 2.4 million people living in West Berlin from slavery by supplying them with everything except water for 15 months. And it was the first battle of the Cold War, and it was the most significant non-combat military operation of the 20th century. And I'm proud to represent these men and work with them, and be their reunion chairman. We hope to have a very good reunion here in the county and the city. I'm working with Visit Wichita, and they've been very helpful. Compliment them. And I'm hoping that we will have a very successful reunion. We will have a reception that will be announced in the newspapers and on television when the veterans start arriving. And we invite the public to come to our reception and meet the veterans. These gentlemen, as I call them, our average age is 91 years old. The oldest one is 98, and it's quite possible he will be here. He is known as the Berlin Airlift Candy Bomber, and he's quite a gentleman and a good friend of mine. But I thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them. I think I passed a press release out to you, and also to the media. And we are looking forward to a good event here in town, and thank you very much for your time this morning.
Well, Mr. Idee, thank you very much for being here and speaking about that event. I spent 29 years in the Air Force, so the Air Force is very close to my heart, and things like this are something that we'd certainly like to make sure that we are a part of. We would love to attend the reception. If you would like a proclamation from the county, we would enjoy preparing a proclamation for this event, and anything else that you need.
I learned that being a politician, you have to be a mind reader, so we would look forward to that.[978.25][978.25](Laughter) And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
I have to leave. I hope you don't mind that I walk out, but I've got a very busy agenda today. Thanks to Visit Wichita.
I understand. Thank you very much. The next two individuals may want to speak during the latter portion. Mr. John Todd, do you want to speak now or later?
Later.
Okay. And Mr. Kelly Parks, do you want to speak now or later?
Now.
Very good. Please state your name for the record. We do know you.
Kelly Parks, North Hoover West Valley Incorporated. I choose to do this now, because I want to get as many people informed out here as I can, because I know sometimes the media doesn't give Richard the accolades that he needs. In early 2010, I announced, I wasn't sure if I was going to seek reelection from my seat up there. When I arrived at home that evening, I got a call, and that call was from Richard Ranzaw. He wanted to meet with me about the job. He was curious, kind of curious about that, and wanted to do his homework, investigate how he could help his county. There's no person that fit that job better than Richard. Richard is intelligent, honest, sincere, vocal, Christian, and caring. He cares about people. He cares about children, seniors, and those that can't take care of themselves. He cares about those in the county that live differently than those in the 19 cities of the county. He cares about those small farms near cities that have been annexed merely for the tax revenue. Richard realized life on the farm is different than life inside a limited city. Many thank him for his votes on common sense rules. Whether it was a party line issue or not, Richard voted on issues that were right with a private property owner. Richard knows the U.S. Constitution and applied that in his job. I would like to thank Richard for his military service. His honesty is beyond reproach. He leads by example and encourages others to be honest, patriotic, and subscribe to the all-American values. Richard is not a loser. He has a great family, a great civilian job that will enable him to achieve life goals, and it wasn't the opposition party that made sure he wasn't reelected, but indicted and future indicted persons within this, his own political party. Richard, job well done. Thank you.
Thank you.[1146.00][1146.00](Applause) Would anyone else, I do not have anyone else that's signed up today, but is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak at this time on the public agenda? Seeing no one, next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of December 5th, 2018.
Thank you. Commissioners, everyone has had a chance to review the minutes from December 5th, December 12th, and December 19th. I move that we approve those minutes. Second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzaw.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Next item, please.
Proclamation. Item D, proclamation declaring Human Trafficking Awareness Month.
Commissioners, I have a proclamation that I'd like to read this morning. It says, "Whereas human trafficking is a form of abuse and exploitation on a continuum of violence which involves a commoditization of human beings for both labor and sexual purposes, robbing individuals of their freedom, dignity, and the right of self-determination. And whereas Sedgwick County is not immune to this crime, as vulnerable youth and adults who are at risk become victims of sexual exploitation, traffickers who exploit vulnerabilities, and buyers who drive demand, and survivors on their way to healing and prosperity, all live in our community. And whereas Sedgwick County has recognized and acknowledged human trafficking as an issue in our community, and has led the way in efforts to combat human trafficking in the state of Kansas through multidisciplinary collaboration, community awareness, education, training, research, and policy development. And whereas Wichita State University, Center for Combating Human Trafficking, and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners, recognize the commitment of Sedgwick County community to educate and raise awareness about human trafficking to create contexts in which prosperity and growth are all possible for all. Now therefore be it resolved that I, David T. Dennis, Chairman, and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim January 2019 as Human Trafficking Awareness Month, and call on all Sedgwick County businesses, organizations, faith-based groups, and families to recognize the vital role that they can play in ending all forms of abuse and exploitation like human trafficking, and urge all citizens to join in observing this month with appropriate programs and activities." Gentlemen, you've heard the proclamation. I move that we approve. Second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzaw.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And we have Dr. Karen Countryman-Roseworm here to receive the proclamation.
Between all those exploitations and Countryman-Roseworm, we just wanted to give you a tongue twister at the first of the year, so, good morning. I also want to recognize, we have several of our team members here from the Center for Combating Human Trafficking and other community members that work with us in this movement. And in light of National Human Trafficking Awareness Month, again, I thank you for the recognition of Human Trafficking Awareness Month with this proclamation. You know, over the last couple of decades, we've made significant progress in the anti-trafficking movement, not only in our state, but across the country. Specifically in our state, many of you may be aware that we've changed legislation and policy. We've removed terminology such as prostitution, specifically when referring to minor children. And then thinking about our own team, on our team alone, we cumulatively have been serving in the anti-trafficking movement for over 120 years. At the Center for Combating Human Trafficking with Wichita State, in just the last year, we provided training and technical assistance to over 17,000 multidisciplinary professionals across the country in 2018. We also provided prevention education locally to young people at no cost, to over 1,500 children and youth, including their parents and guardians and teachers. And then we had 29 survivors in our Pathway to Prosperity program at Wichita State in the last year. But despite all this progress, the reality is that we still have a long ways to go. Many of you may have heard about the Centoya Brown case in the news media, the national news lately, the young lady who, despite being a victim of human trafficking, was unjustly criminalized, and just recently, this week, received clemency. We have those same kind of cases here. And so in light of Human Trafficking Awareness Month, I ask all of us to stop with just the typical rhetoric and saying, "Yay, let's go get the traffickers," but we really stop and pause and recognize that we have a problem in our own state of young people who, due to their socioeconomic status, due to their connections with our systems of care, such as Department of Children and Families, or our criminal legal systems, they're getting swept up in trafficking too. And then when we identify them, we charge them with these crimes, and they're not getting adequate help. So again, in light of National Human Trafficking Awareness Month, and in light of this proclamation, I ask that we do better, and that we stand up for those most marginalized in our community, and that we give them the help that they need. Because we truly believe that one person exploited is one too many, and we also believe that it's transformational relationships that will change their lives, not being detained. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for being here today. We appreciate it, and we are proud to be part of the proclamation on this, but hope that we can do better. I serve on the Board for the Exploited and Missing Childs Unit here, so I see firsthand exactly what the magnitude of the problem is.
Yes.
There is a problem that we need to address.
Yes.
And I appreciate it.
Absolutely. And I encourage anybody, we have several events going on this month, including a men's event that's open to the public on the 24th, in which the Attorney General Derek Schmidt will be there. It's called Men Rising. And then also, we have a conference on the 25th, in which we'll have speakers from across the country that will be there. So I'll give you a list of those events. Those events are also available on our Facebook page or on our website, combatinghumantrafficking.org. May I approach you to give you a gift as well?
Certainly.
So, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thanks again for being here today. Madam Clerk, next item.
Appointments. Item E, accept the resignation of Larry White from the Sedgwick County District III Citizens' Advisory Board.
Good morning, Commissioner Mike Capoun, Interim County Councilor. You have before you a letter from Mr. White, who is asking to resign from the Third District Citizens Advisory Board due to health reasons. We'd ask that you accept Mr. White's resignation.
Thank you, Mr. Capoun. Mr. White served as a member of my Citizens Advisory Board from the very first. Unfortunately, his health does not going to allow him to be able to continue to serve. So I move that we accept his resignation. Second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzaw.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Next item, please.
Item F, resolution appointing Nancy Hinton to the Sedgwick County Third District Citizens' Advisory Board.
Commissioners, Mike Capoun, again, Interim County Councilor, to replace Mr. White. The Chairman has recommended the appointment of Nancy Hinton to serve on the Third District Citizens Advisory Board. The resolution before you has a disappointment, and it's improper form, and asks you to approve the resolution.
Thank you. Why don't we combine Foxtrot and Gulf?
Okay. Item G is a resolution appointing Sherry Livingston to the Third District Citizens' Advisory Board. The resolution is also in proper form, and so Items F and G, approval of resolutions from Items F and G would appoint both Ms. Hinton and Ms. Livingston to the Third District Advisory Board.
Okay, and I understand that they're here to be sworn in this morning. Okay? And as soon as we make the motion, we'll let each of them speak individually if they're both here, but I have to make a motion that we approve Nancy Hinton and Sherry Livingston this morning. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzaw.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Mr. Clerk.
Good morning, Commissioners. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the state of Kansas, and faithfully discharge duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Third District Citizens Advisory Board. So help me God.
I do. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to serve. Since I've retired from the Pando Initiative, I've always wanted to find a way to continue to serve the community, and I appreciate Mr. Dennis supporting my nomination for that position. So thank you very much, and I look forward to working with you.
Well, thank you. I appreciate your service.
Sure.
We look forward to seeing you the first Monday of the month. We meet the first Monday of every month. This last meeting, we decided to take July off, because if we meet the first Monday, it runs right into the 4th of July, so we are going to take one month off, but I do want to make sure that the public's aware that we meet out at Goddard Activity Center the first Monday of each month at 7:00 p.m.
Great. Look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next item, please.
Item H, resolution appointing Mike Reed to the Sedgwick County Gibson Township Board as Treasurer.
Commissioners, you have before you a resolution appointing Michael Reed to be the Sedgwick County Gibson Township Board Treasurer. As you remember, I think it was a meeting on December 19th that we accepted the resignation of Mr. Govert, who was previous Township Treasurer. And upon the recommendation of Commissioner Howe, we would now ask you for this resolution to appoint Michael Reed.
Commissioner Howe.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to, just to point out that, I didn't know this when we made the resolution in December, but Mr. Govert actually served the township for 30 years, and I thought that was extraordinary and worthy of mention, so, again, I thank him for his service, but I know that Michael Reed will do a tremendous job, and he and his wife are both here this morning. I wanted to thank him for his willingness to step up and take over this position. Gibson Township is very well managed, and their mill levy is very low, and they do a great job. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion, we would appoint Michael Reed to fill the position of, the vacated position of Willie Govert.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please. I'm sorry. He's here to get sworn in. Very good.
All right. Please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Gibson Township Board Treasurer. So help me God.
First of all, I want to thank Commissioner Jim Howe for the recommendation for this, and also for the board's support. My goal is, as Jim stated, Willie Govert's personal friend of mine, when he first approached me on possibly taking over this position for him, that he wanted to retire. I'll be quite honest with you, I wasn't quite familiar with what the township duties were. I've attended some of their meetings as an observer. I've learned now how important the townships are, and what their functions are that they serve, and my goal will be to just be, continue the fiscal responsibility that Willie Govert has shown over the last 30 years, and the Township Board in general. So I thank you for this opportunity, and that's my goal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item I. Resolution Appointing Jerry Myers to the Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging.
Commissioner Howe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to just...
Should have let Mr. ...
Let Mr. Papoon say it.
I'll defer to Mr. Howe if you want, or you want, I'll be happy to do it. This is a resolution for you, appointing Jerry Myers to be Commissioner Howe's appointment to the Advisory Council on Aging and Physical Disabilities, due to the unfortunate passing recently of Mr. Clifford Helms.
Yeah.
And this is to replace that appointment, and the resolution's in proper form, and asks that you approve the resolution.
Now, Commissioner Howe.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to recognize Clifford Helms is a tremendous man that was extremely passionate and a huge advocate for seniors, and he did a great job on the board, but he recently, unexpectedly, did pass, and we do miss him, and I want to thank him and his family for his dedication and service to the county. But in his stead, I would like to now recognize and appoint, or nominate Jerry Myers to replace him on this board. He, I'm sorry, Jerry Myers is also a strong and passionate advocate for seniors, and I know her very well. She's done a great job over the years. She's connected with the Mulvane Senior Center and so on. I would like to make the nomination, we would appoint Jerry Myers to this position.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
All right, please stand here. Okay, please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging. So, oh my God.
I do.
Okay, congratulations. That's good. Okay.
Commissioners, I would like to thank Mr. Howe personally for calling me and asking if somebody in Mulvane wanted to serve on this committee. Seniors are very, very important people. In fact, I'm one too, so I understand where they're coming from. I love them very much. I will do my very best to serve on this committee in any way that I will be needed, and I thank you very much.
Thank you very much for being here today. Thanks for serving. Before we go on to new business, this is the last meeting, as I said, of the current commissioners is impaneled today, and I want to make sure that I thank them before we go into that portion of it, but also want to recognize that we do have the new commission being sworn in on the 12th at 2:00 PM down in the jury room downstairs. We want to make sure everyone is invited to that, that would like to attend. And both new members that are going to be sworn in are here today. We've got Commissioner-elect Pete Meitzner for District One is visiting with us this morning, and Commissioner-elect Lacy Cruz from District Four is with us this morning, so we want to welcome them to our meeting.
It's the 13th, by the way, not the 12th.
The 13th, you're right.
The 13th, yes.
I've got the 12th on my mind because I'm going to Commissioner in the USS Wichita on the 12th. All right. Next item, please.
New business. Item J. Report to the Board of Bids and Contracts, Regular Meeting of January 3rd, 2019.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. The meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts on January 3rd, we have one item to present to you today, and that is the Change Order Number Four for the 2018 Coal Mix and Gravel Project for Public Works. This recommendation is to accept this change order from Flynn Hills Materials LLC, and in this case, it's a decreased amount of $79,851.89. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval of this item.
Any Commissioners have any questions? Seeing none, I move that we approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Mr. Manager.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Stoltz, Interim County Manager, recommend approval of Items K through T on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Commissioner Howe.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would start off by making a motion. We would approve these items, K through T. But on Item M, I do want to make just a brief comment, and I don't need to pull it off the consent agenda. I do support all of these items. But on Item M, I want you to know, we did spend some extra time on this. We did push this back several weeks, maybe even a month, for further discussion, and I wanted to just thank the staff for all their extra work, helping me feel more comfortable with this one, and I would say we do absolutely need to do this. It does identify, we have identified a number of action items to make this process better in the future, but this is very, very important. I want to thank Tanya Cole, Lindsay Portarso, Wes Ellington, and a few others. Chief Haynes, thank you for your work on this. Manager Stoltz, thank you. But with that, I would like to make that motion, we would approve these items. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. I would like to second that. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Before we continue on with the next item, I'd like to recess the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners for January 9th, 2019. Call the order of the governing body of Fire District Number One for January 9th, 2019. Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Commissioner Ranza.
Present.
Commissioner Howe.
Present.
Commissioner Unruh.
Present.
Chairman Dennis.
Present. Next item, please.
Public Agenda.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak on the public agenda for the Fire District Number One this morning? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, next item.
Consideration of Minutes. Item A. Fire Meeting Minutes of December 19, 2018.
Commissioners, everyone's had a chance to review the minutes from December 19th. I move that we approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Morning again. Commissioners, recommend approving Item B on consent agenda, please.
Thank you. I move that we approve Item Bravo.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. At this time, I'd like to adjourn the Fire District Board of Governing Body of Fire District Number One, and call the order again, the governing body of the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners for January 9th. Next item, please.
Legislative Issues.
Mr. Papoon, do we have anything for legislative issues today?
No, sir. We do have a legislative dinner this evening, but no issues for you today.
We not only have a dinner, but tomorrow out at WSU, we have a meeting with the delegation also, so we do have a lot going on with our legislative agenda right now. Very good. Madam Clerk, next item.
Other.
Other. At this point in time, we are going to start recognizing Commissioner Ranza and Commissioner Unruh. One of the things that I will be presenting today is a picture to each of those individuals. It will be in a frame when it's presented today, but we will take it back from them and have it out of the frame, so that during the reception today, if anyone would like to sign that picture, that they would have an opportunity at that time. So that is something that you'll see when we go over to the other conference room. The way that we're going to go through the process today is that here in a moment, Commissioner Ranza and I are going to go down and take place at the podium, and we will present the items. We will get the photos taken at that time. I will then open it up to anyone in the audience that wants to speak. When they're done, I will open it up to our Commissioners so that they can speak, and after Commissioner Ranza is finished with us recognizing eight years of public service, I will then ask Commissioner Unruh to come down and join me at the podium. So, just so that no one's confused about what we're doing, Commissioner Ranza and Ladies and gentlemen, this is kind of a bittersweet moment, because it's the last time that these five individuals will be serving as a commission for the citizens in Sedgwick County. It's been my honor to serve with Commissioner Ranza for the past two years. I have learned an awful lot from him during that period of time. I think that after two years of serving with him, I'm a better Commissioner than I was when I started, and I sincerely appreciate his service. At this time, we've got a couple gifts that we're going to present to him, and then, as I said, we'll open it up to the public. The last person to be able to speak after we're finished will be Commissioner Ranza, so his opportunity will be coming up here in a moment. But first of all, we've got Lisa and Carol here today. We have the picture that, let's go around in front of the podium, so. I have a photo that I'd like to present. It's kind of a collage of the different things that he's participated in here recently, and this is what we'll take back out of the frame, and then allow everyone to sign. The second thing, I'm not sure if I'm going to give him or keep it, but unfortunately, he's got his name on it. It's a beautiful clock, says Richard Ranza, Commissioner, Fourth District, eight years of service, and appreciation for your dedication and service to Sedgwick County. At this time, I'm going to step away from the podium with Commissioner Ranza, and I'm going to invite the public. If anyone wants to come up at this time and speak, please state your name for the record,
Thank you, Commissioner Dennis. It is my pleasure, as a citizen, my name is John Todd. My pleasure as a citizen of Wichita-Sedgwick County to, on behalf of over 50 other citizens who signed an award certificate, to present an exemplary citizen award to outgoing Commissioner Richard Ranza. Whereas our fellow citizen, Richard Ranza, has honorably served the citizens of Sedgwick County on the Board of County Commissioners with distinction for eight years from 2011 to 2019. Richard has set the bar for other public officials by demonstrating the highest levels of service with integrity. Richard has taken principal stands, second to none, in fighting corruption, supporting common sense fiscal responsibility by advocating a low tax and regulatory structure that benefits everyone, not just the insider few. Richard has been willing to stand alone when fighting for the interests of the citizens of Sedgwick County by taking principal stands on important issues that many times serve to the detriment of his own personal interests as an elected official. This is, I'm missing a side, this is a noble position to take. Thank you, Richard, for your service to our community. We wish you Godspeed in your future endeavors. This is an award presented to Richard Ranza by fellow citizens. Congratulations, Richard. Can we get pictures? And could we bring the family up, and other, anyone who'd like to come up for pictures?
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak today? Lonnie. State your name for the record.
Lonnie Wright, 1721 South Lulu, and I've appreciated my friendship with Commissioner Ranza, and I have learned from him. There sometimes have been more entertainment than I wanted, but I recognize that you've contributed to our decision-making, and I appreciate how you became involved. As a physician's assistant, you started reading some of our original documents and developed your own understanding of how government should relate to people, and I recognize that distinctionness. So while we've not always agreed, I always appreciate our friendship, and I think you have had a favorable effect for us, so I always wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you, Lonnie. Thank you, Lonnie. Anyone else? Then I'll turn it to the Commission. I don't have a light in front of me, so you're going to have to raise your hand if you want to be recognized. Commissioner Howe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I struggled for about the last month thinking about what I would say at this time, and I've come up with a few things I would like to reflect on. I was going to speak from my heart. I don't have it written out, so I was going to talk about some of the values and principles and accomplishments that Commissioner Ranza has made in the county. First off, let me just start off by saying he's a good friend and a good mentor. When I chose to run for this office, I didn't know a lot about the county, and I looked to him as one I could go to to get information about the details, about how the county would operate, and he's always knew the information. He was always a detailed person, and very analytical, and very, very smart. He was always a detailed person and very analytical and very, very smart. So some of the words I would like to highlight, I think he's very hardworking. I noticed that he always studies the agenda. He does the background information. He knows why he votes the way he does, and I respect him for that. I think that's a rare thing in many elected officials, but he has always been very hardworking. He's very detailed and analytical. I appreciate those things. I think I'm the same way in those regards, and so when I find people that are detailed and analytical, I always tend to appreciate those character traits, and I can say that certainly about him. I know he's very passionate, and he always taken some criticism for his passion on some things, but he's always been passionate, and I would just say, the substance of what he said was always important to me. And so you have to look past some of the emotion and look at the things that he's saying, and the substance was always important to him, and I hope that the messages would get through to people because what he said was really very well-grounded in truth. And in that regard, he's a leader. A lot of people in political offices, they just vote on the agenda items as they come up, but Commissioner Ranzau would actually go find things that needed to be worked on, and he would bring items to the agenda that he was passionate about. And some of those things never made the news, but they were things that he worked on for years that were based in regulations and fees, reducing, I should say, adding, you know, creating more freedom for people to create businesses. Agritourism is a good example. He -- a lot of these things didn't make the news very much, and a lot of people may not even know about that. It's easy to talk about the big accomplishments. Interest Bank Arena, for example, is a huge accomplishment, and Commissioner Ranzau -- all right, Unruh had a lot to do with that, with Commissioner Norton. Those are really big items that the whole community can really look at and say, "That's a big deal," and it was. But Commissioner Ranzau focused on a lot of little things, and so it's -- he didn't get recognition, but they were important nonetheless, and so I'd like to just point out a few of those things. The Douglas Tag Office was a change. It wasn't going to go in the Reagan Building, but we moved it over to Douglas. I think everybody would agree, a huge success. And let me say, we saved a lot of money out of Credit Commissioner Ranzau for that. The debt policy, we cut our debt policy in half. We set a resolution to target a mill levy, so we don't have the incremental increases in our mill levy over the years like it typically does happen in most municipalities. So that was a tremendous change. Community Crisis Center, we should be very proud of that, and we need to continue that effort going forward. I know mental health is one of our biggest priorities going forward, but I think that one of the biggest accomplishments, of course, is Community Crisis Center, and Commissioner Ranzau's been a huge advocate for that. Law Enforcement Training Center, when he was chairman in 2015, he initiated that discussion with the mayor across the street and asked that we would be the leader on that, and was able to encourage the city to agree to that. And Commissioner Ranzau, I would credit, you know, we had a very, very long community discussion, maybe 15 or 20 years, about trying to find a replacement for law enforcement, for the law enforcement training center. But Commissioner Ranzau was able to get that deal moving forward, and that was very -- that was probably his, in my opinion, probably maybe your greatest success, is getting that done. And in the process, we saved about $20 million as a community. We only had to pay $5 million. We actually paid cash. And Commissioner Ranzau's been an advocate for a more responsible government, for transparency and accountability, and effective and efficient government, using less debt and more cash, prioritizing within government. He is a standard for all of those ideas. In fact, I would say that he is a conservative standard. In fact, I would say, to his disappointment, he couldn't control my vote. Sometimes I wouldn't vote along with him, and I am -- it caused me to question myself a little bit because I would wonder, you know, if Commissioner Ranzau is over on this position, I need to really double-check and rethink why I'm maybe not with him. He's a conservative standard, and so I appreciate his consistent conservative values he's had this whole time he's been here. Anyway, I don't know what else to say other than he's going to be missed. He has made a huge difference in Sedgwick County. You left a legacy. I think you will always be remembered as a conservative, probably in my opinion, the most conservative commissioner in the history of Sedgwick County. So I want to say thank you for your service, and I wish you the best going forward. I know your career is going to be fine. You're a professional. You don't need to worry about your future. You're very employable, and you're going to do fine. But I think you've done a great job here, and I want to say thank you for all you've done. So with that, thank you, Commissioner Ranzau.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Unruh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think probably most of my comments would be very consistent with what Lonnie Wright said, so Lonnie, you did a good job, and I would echo that. I -- for seven and a half years, I think Richard and I were pretty good friends and lament the fact that that friendship has changed, but nevertheless, that's the fact of life, I guess, and I just would say that I hope, as you go forward, that things will be successful for you.
Thank you. And I'd just like to thank Commissioner Ranzau. It's never easy serving an elected office. You put yourself, your family, through a lot of trials that you wouldn't have otherwise, and best of luck in the new -- your new endeavors. Thank you.
Anyone that's ever followed the commission knows that we are really fairly formal. We call each other by the last name and commissioner. Today, I want to call him Richard because, over the past two years, he has become a friend of mine, and when we're not at the desk, it's Richard David, and I appreciate that. He speaks very frequently about his family. I appreciate that part of his family is here, which they all could have been here today to recognize his eight years of service. We speak about basketball because both of us are very involved in youth sports, and he is very involved in his family. As a matter of fact, yesterday afternoon, they had a basketball game that they went to. So I've truly enjoyed working with Richard. I apologize because I've said his last name wrong so many times, and I keep trying to say it right, but I started out saying it wrong to begin with, and it just stuck in my mind. But again, I have learned a lot. If you go back and look at our voting record, you'll find that probably more often than not, we voted the same way. There are a few things that we disagree on, but we do it as gentlemen, and that's what I appreciate, working with Richard. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Richard Ranzau and let him have the final word. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I've written down some notes here. I have a long list of things to talk about. I remember the first time I spoke in a commission meeting, I was a little nervous, and I was trying to thank everybody that helped me get elected, and I forgot to thank my family. So I decided I better write everything down here today so I don't forget everything. But first, I want to thank my fellow county commissioners, both past and present, for being able to serve with them over the last eight years. It has been a pleasure, and it has been something that I've enjoyed. It's had its ups and downs, it has its challenges, but I'm happy to serve with everyone I served with. You know, I think it's -- one thing I'll say is, we actually end up voting the same way 95% to 98% of the time, okay? Because most of the things we do here are routine, but the things that we don't vote on, sometimes there's dissension, there's differences of opinion, and I want to say that that's important, and I think that's good. We need different voices, different points of views. We need to have a vigorous debate about important issues for the health of our republic at every level of government. If we get to the point where everything's unanimous all the time, then I think we're in trouble. But I also want to thank all the employees of Sedgwick County that work so hard, day in and day out, and make sacrifices. Everybody I have come across and worked with at the county, I've enjoyed meeting, get to know, and working with. It's been a pleasure. I celebrate everything that they do, and I'm very appreciative of all the efforts they put out there. And I'm very proud to say that I was a Sedgwick County Commissioner because I think we have a reputation of hard work, getting things done, and doing things the right way, and I'm very proud of that, and I'm very proud of our employees. Next, I want to thank the citizens of Sedgwick County, people who came here today, Kelly, Parks, John Todd, Pete and Kathy Hannah, and everybody else who supported me by going door-to-door for me, voting for me, making financial contributions. I remember very well the first time somebody handed me a check. It was very sobering to say, to become the realization that this person is putting their faith in me to the point that they're giving me their hard-earned money. And I didn't take that lightly. And then, after the first election that I won, the primaries, I looked at the numbers. I don't remember the number, but I remember, so all those people voted for me. Once again, they put their faith into me to fight for them and do what I thought was best, to help them, and that's very sobering, something I've never forgotten. I've tried to fight for the taxpayer every day I was in here. I've tried to remain consistent, and I think I've done that, but I want to thank them for the support and their trust they've given to me over the last eight years, and I hope they're happy with how I serve them. And then, obviously, I want to thank my family, my wife, Rochelle, and my son, Ryan, is here today. The other two are in school. Ryan is a freshman at K-State, and he's home on Christmas break, so he was able to be here today. You know, I look back as to why I ran for office to begin with, and it was really out of frustration and concern, frustration with how I saw government working at all levels of government, and concern for the future of our children. That motivated me to give up, really, my dream job as a physician assistant. I loved doing orthopedic surgery, and it was a very, very tough decision, but I felt like I, you know, I would get mad at the TV and scream and holler, and I said, "I'm going to get involved or try and do something," and I did, and I'm glad that I did. But I did it for them. I wish I could say that I'm more optimistic for the future of our children and our country, but after experiencing politics, I'm really not. You know, it's ironic. Today, we had a gentleman show up and talk about the Berlin Air Lift Veterans Association. He talked about it was the first battle of the Cold War, where we fought up against the communists and their economic ideology called socialism, something that we, in the past, fought against and worked against, and now the evil godless ideology of socialism is being celebrated by politicians and news media, professors, teachers throughout this country. And it's scary, and that shows a lack of understanding of history, of economics. My son, Ryan, was told when he was a sophomore in high school that socialism is better than capitalism. That scares me. So the fight isn't over, but I've tried to stand for the principles of individual freedom, individual responsibility, limited government, fiscal conservatism. I've tried to remain consistent. I believe I have. I sleep good at night, knowing that I did. I voted the way I felt, the way I needed to, based on the facts I was given. I didn't compromise. Some of my votes were very tough. I anguished over them, toss and turn at night, and because I knew I was going against the grain, but when you look at the facts and look at the data, it took me in a certain direction, and I'm proud that I was able to stand true to my values and do what I thought was right. And in the end, I have no regrets. You can say I lost an election, but I did not lose my soul, and in the end, that's the only thing that really matters. Thank you.
And again, thank you, Richard, very much. The one thing I can always say, that I always trust Richard. I've told him this a couple times privately. I said, "I would give him my billfold. I trust him that much." I always know where he's coming from. We don't always agree, but I always know where he's coming from, so I appreciate that in him. One thing I would ask Tony to do is, I don't think we've got a nice picture, once we get over to the other room, of the current five commissioners together, and before that we don't have this group together, I'd like to get a picture of all five of us, if we could. Thank you, Richard. This time, I'd like to bring Commissioner Dave Unruh down and recognize him. Thank you. I've known Dave a little bit longer, and I'm going to use first name again instead of Commissioner. I think today is the day that we need to be a little bit more informal because we're saying goodbye to some of our friends today. But I've known Dave a little longer than I've known Richard. I've appreciated him for a long time. I appreciate what he's done for our community. He's the last commissioner here that had anything to do with the purchase of the Interest Bank Arena, and I think that is a tribute to all the commissioners that voted to have that. It's one of the nice things that you get to do when you're the chairman, is you get to go over when there's a huge event that's coming up, and you get to state that this is something that belongs to Sedgwick County, and it's testament to the decisions of a commission that went before us, and he is the last one that participated in that. He's also one of the commissioners that was involved in getting the new elephant exhibit that we have at the zoo, which is, again, testament to his foresight, the number-one tourist attraction in the state of Kansas. We have a fantastic elephant exhibit right now, and there is a breeding program that they are working on currently. We may have one of the elephants. I haven't heard lately for sure, but they think that one of them is expecting, and again, that is something that is testament to Commissioner Unruh, Dave Unruh, and what he has done. So at this time, we've got a couple gifts that we're going to give him, the same two gifts that we just gave before, and I'd like him to come out in front of the podium so he can receive each one of these. Again, we have a picture, a collage, that everyone will have a chance to sign. The other thing we have is a beautiful crystal clock. It's got the first name correct, the rest of it's wrong, but it says David M. Unruh on this one. Commissioner, 1st District, 16 years of service and appreciation to your dedication and service to Sedgwick County.
Okay.
At this time, I'd like to open it up to any one of the audience, if anyone would like to speak this morning. This is the time to do it. Gail Malone. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Gail Malone, and thank you, Chairman, very much. I am a volunteer in this community, and I live in the 1st District. I have been a longtime volunteer for a variety of nonprofit boards in our community over the years, including the Sedgwick County Zoological Society, which I've worked with staff to raise dollars to enhance our zoo with new and improved exhibits. I am pleased to be part of a group of community leaders who wanted to publicly thank Dave Unruh for his 16 years. Those leaders and many more are grateful today for his public service, and if you allow me, we would like to provide that gratitude on the record. In addition to myself, those who have signed this editorial were Charlie Chandler, Debbie Gann, John Rolfe, Jeff Turner, Jim Walters, Cheryl Wolford, and Vera Bothner. I personally know and have received many emails since this came out of others that wished their name would have been on it also. We have volunteered as business and community members for years on boards and initiatives to advance our community. Through these efforts, we experienced working with great public servants who are local elected leaders. For 16 years, Sedgwick County has been fortunate. Dave Unruh served as one of those elected leaders. After building a successful business, he ran and won four consecutive terms. He chose to retire, and his fourth term ends this week. He easily won reelection because his constituents and the rest of us knew he was dedicated to strengthening our community, region, and state. Commissioner Unruh supported game-changing initiatives. Through them, he demonstrated his commitment to people and the organizations serving them while also remaining a fiscal conservative. His humility allowed him to listen to others. He was a great partner who realized when the county needed to lead and when it was time for others to lead. He asked questions to learn what worked best, whether from government, nonprofit, or business. It takes courage to embrace a vision or implement change. It takes more courage to act. For every one of these big initiatives, Commissioner Unruh helped lead because he believed they have the ability to change the community and region for the better, for now and for generations. Many have already demonstrated their value for our long-term future. In economic development, Commissioner Unruh was chairman in 2006 when the board voted to build a world-class technical educational facility to ensure we remain competitive for new jobs. The National Center for Aviation Training is home to the growing WSU Tech. He also championed smart economic development programs that generated additional tax dollars and regional cooperation through REEP and other efforts. In quality of life, Commissioner Unruh is the last commissioner who served 15 years when voters approved the sales tax to build Interest when voters approved the sales tax to build Intrust Bank Arena, now open nine years. His leadership helped ensure the Sedgwick County Zoo could inspire future generations to protect elephants through a nationally recognized exhibit. He supported Exploration Place, where children and their families have the first opportunity for hands-on learning, especially in STEM. In public safety, Commissioner Unruh advocated for important policy decisions that saved the county and taxpayers money while ensuring a safe community, including eliminating the need for jail expansion. His support of new mental health programs and public health issues changed lives for many. These and hundreds of other efforts require teamwork among multiple organizations, partners, people, and governments. Commissioner Unruh would be the first to give credit to the entire team of other leaders, the support of the community, nonprofit partners, and especially the great county staff. Throughout Dave Unruh's business and elected career, he has been dedicated to our community. In his perseverance to get things done and his belief in our future, he's made a difference. We join with the community in thanking him and wishing him well. Commissioner Unruh, I personally want to thank you in addition to the public thank you for all that you have done. I have personally enjoyed working with you to better our community. I wish you all the best in this new chapter of your life, knowing that our community is better thanks to you.
Anyone else would like to speak today? Please state your name for the record, or we know you.
Dave, would you come closer?
This is getting scary.
I'm Kristi Zukovich, for the record, and I am here today to speak as a county employee, and I still consider myself as a county employee, even though I'm a former employee. And Dave is an employee. He's always acted like an employee. He has always acted like he's one of us, so that's why I wanted you close. I had the privilege to work with a number of elected officials, both in the county, the city of Wichita, and the other cities in our community over 29 years. And it has been a privilege to understand and for them to remind us all what it means to be a true public servant. I had the privilege to learn from so many like Tom Winters and Ben Shortino, Tim Norton, Carolyn McGinn, our retired manager Bill Buchanan, and of course, you. We had at one time, and for most of my career, values of our organization of accountability, commitment, equal opportunity, honesty, open communication, professionalism, and respect. And you always modeled all of these to the public and especially to the employees. You told us that a true public employee is focused on what the community needs. A few of the words that other employees, both current and past, have used to describe Dave include things that demonstrate his character: leadership, wisdom, fairness, kindness, voice of reason, and integrity. And again, that all describes your character. So I now know that your values at Sedgwick County are aligned to spell out Sedgwick instead of what we all knew as Ace Hopper, but I'd like to spell out character, because I think it is what describes you, and that is courteous, humble, admirable, rational, appreciative, civil, thoughtful, even-mannered, and respectful. So, on behalf of myself, my husband John, who's served for 31 years, and all other employees who maybe can't come up here and publicly say thank you, we appreciate you.
Anyone else in the audience wish to speak today? See no one? I'll bring it back to the bench. Is anyone of the commissioners wish to speak today? Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, this is not fun for me personally. It's a very sad day, but I am excited for Dave and Karen and the future they're going to have. They're going to be able to travel and do a lot of stuff that Dave's put on hold because of his service to the community. A famous political quote says that a politician thinks of the next election, but a statesman thinks of the next generation. I, for one, can attest that Dave Unruh is a statesman. Much has been written and said, very eloquently, by the way, by Gail, that was wonderful, has talked about Dave Unruh's consequential victories: the National Center for Aviation Training, Intrust Bank Arena, stabilizing our budget through the Great Recession, stabilizing the jail, creating a positive work environment for the thousands of employees and their families because of his temperament and his personality. Many do not discuss the faith that the citizens of Sedgwick County had for him. His blowout election victories, and even most recently, in his last election, he didn't even have an opponent in the primary or general. The voters had such faith that Dave Unruh was the right man for the job that they didn't even bother running against him, which is pretty unheard of in this environment. Our partners, like the city of Wichita, like the state of Kansas, like Wichita State University, were able to achieve many huge accomplishments because Dave Unruh understands that collaboration and partnering is extremely important, and it's critical to allow us to have successes in our community. And there are so many victories that Dave Unruh's fingerprints are all over, but yet his name is not on. I've heard it often said that a society grows great when old men plant trees whose shade they know they will never sit in. And I love that quote because it exemplifies Dave Unruh. It also has the phrase "old man" in it, and that became quite a topic during the 2016 election. And a lot was said about old men. I asked Dave Unruh, I said, "Dave, does this bother you that they are calling you an old man?" And he said, "No, Michael, because I'm an old man." And that is Dave's personality to a T. He brushes things off. He does not hold grudges. He laughs it off because he knows there's important work to be done. That's why I'm going to miss him. I think that's why our community, it's a loss for our community. But for sure, his legacy is going to be felt, not just in the immediate future, but for legacies to come, and that our children, our grandchildren, they're going to be able to sit under those innumerable trees that Dave Unruh planted. So, thank you, Commissioner Unruh.
Thank you. Commissioner Ranzau.
Thank you. Well, Dave, I've served with you longer than anyone up here, eight years, and we've had agreements and disagreements on policy. And as much as I appreciate and enjoy the political debates, I think the things that I remember the most will be the personal things. We spent a lot of time in your office talking about religion, wrestling, family, kids. My kids have grown up while I've served here with you. The life challenges of the funerals for your parents, my father. I remember you came down to Ark City for my dad's funeral, and I didn't expect to do that, you and a couple others, and I appreciate that. I'll never forget it. So, it's really the life things that we've gone through together that I'll always remember, and I thank you for your service to Sedgwick County.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want you to know that I find it an honor that I got to serve alongside you. You're a legacy for Sedgwick County, and you also will be remembered for, I think forever. You left your marks across the county. I know Commissioner O'Donnell said that your name's not everywhere, but really it is everywhere. There's brass plaques all over this county with your name on it, and you've made a difference in numerous ways. I won't repeat the comments about the Intrust Bank Arena and National Center for Aviation Training and other things, Elephant Exhibit. Those are big items, of course, that you are instrumental in making those things happen, so I won't repeat any of that. But you are behind the scenes. I know that Commissioner Ranzau just mentioned it. You were a wrestler when you were very, I guess, growing up, you were a wrestler and pretty good at it. I would tell you that you've wrestled some issues behind the scenes here as well, and I respect you for that. As Commissioner Ranzau said, debate is good, and difference of opinion is good. It's why we have a board. Boards are healthier when they have disagreements and differences of opinion, and I think that you and I have voted together nearly all the time, very few times have we actually voted differently. In fact, I've voted with you more than Richard has, just for the record. You're active in your church, you're a man of faith, and I respect you for that, and I consider you my friend. We've also had many discussions as friends about doctrine, and I've enjoyed that very much. I know you're esteemed husband and father and grandfather, and you've earned the right to have a new chapter in your life, and I hope you enjoy many, many more years to come. You are esteemed not only by the people in this room and the staff across Sedgwick County, but really by your district and the business world across our county. You're an esteemed official. When people think of Sedgwick County, you're the face of Sedgwick County right now and have been for quite a long time. So, you'll be missed, and I want to say thank you for your service, and I'm grateful that I got to serve alongside you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Dave asked to have the last word, so I'm going to have the next-to-last word, and then I'll go back up to the bench and let him finish off with the last word. But a couple things, just I know some folks have already touched on it. First of all, wrestling is near and dear to his heart. I don't know how many of you know that he is in the National Wrestling Hall of Fame, which was just inducted in just within the last year, I believe, or a little longer than that. But that is one of his passions. Again, just as with Commissioner Ranzau, Dave and I do talk about sports a little bit, and wrestling is one of the sports that I announce. As a matter of fact, tomorrow night, if anyone wants to come out and watch Northwest, we've got a match at Northwest, 7 o'clock tomorrow night, that I'll be announcing. But as Commissioner O'Donnell mentioned, his legacy is going to live on. Twice in the last couple months, we've had international companies in here, and we can't talk about who they are, but we're trying to woo them into this area. And the way we do that is we show them in CAT, that Sedgwick County put $50 million in. They are looking for someone that is interested in developing the workforce, and that is very impressive when I can say, when I can sit there with an international company and say, "We built this. Sedgwick County built this for our workforce." And so that's a legacy that is paying dividends even today. I sincerely appreciate working with him, getting to know he and Karen very well. I'm going to sell all my stocks in the stock market and buy wine, because I'm going to make a fortune off of he and Karen. So, I look forward to continuing our close friendship that we've developed. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Dave Unruh, and I'm going to go back up to the bench. Thanks, sir.
Thanks, Dave. Well, I don't know where to start after all these comments, some beautiful comments from Gail and Kristi and from the chairman, from my colleagues. I truly am grateful and humbled by your comments. I should say that although the chairman said that he had known me a little longer than Richard, he's never offered to give me his billfold. So, Richard's one up on me there. He made some comment about me and the elephants and the elephants being pregnant, and I got nothing to do with that either, so I don't know. So you can see how at a loss for words I am when I make comments like that. But I do have a couple things I would like to say, and once again, the comments that have already been made are too generous, but I really am appreciative and thank you for the comments that have been made, the expressions of support. But as I thought about the last 16 years, it made me think about how much has changed in our community and how privileged I have been to be a small part of that change. And while I've had a unique opportunity to be involved in some really significant efforts here at Sedgwick County, I'm always mindful that it's an effort of many to make our city and our county and our region and our state better. So I want to take a minute just to acknowledge some of those things in general that are the work of many different entities that have been working hard towards the goal of making our region better. We have revitalization in downtown with new housing and old office buildings. We have cultural arts and entertainment districts and events. We have the Innovation Campus at Wichita State and a state-of-the-art technical training center at National Center for Aviation Training. We have bike trails connecting all parts of our city and county, have a new airport, advanced learning library, the Mark Arts Center, a new law enforcement training center, and the Regional Forensic Science Center. We have business expansions and new constructions for business in all parts of this community. We have stronger schools and critical social services that help at-risk children and those most vulnerable. And of course, I'm especially proud that we have a great arena and a world-class elephant exhibit at the zoo. And this just scratches the surface. We also continue to support, as Sedgwick County Government, many strong needs of our community, like Starkey, the Child Advocacy Center, and other nonprofits in our community, Exploration Place, and other cultural entities. We have dedicated public safety officials in 911, fire, EMS, and law enforcement that we continue to support, essential health and mental health organizations, and as been mentioned, the Community Crisis Center, the River Festival, community festivals, and Final Fridays. All these are things that Sedgwick County has been involved in, sometimes more on a singular basis, but oftentimes in coordination with the rest of the community. And so my point is, is these things don't happen by chance. It's a result of vision and relationships, listening, and a willingness to engage others in the solutions. This is community. It's about collaboration and a presumption of goodwill. It's about being thoughtful, open, and transparent. It's about trusting your team, engaging stakeholders, thinking long-term, and making informed decisions. And most importantly, I think, it's remembering that you don't do it alone. I have believed and continue to believe that this is about trust and teamwork and transparency. And I've had several teams or groups of folks that have been particularly important in making my tenure as a county commissioner exciting, enjoyable, and successful. First, my family, my wife Karen, we've been married now for 56 years, so she's been helping me a long time. But my kids, our children, Greg and Maria, and Gary and Kara, have been great supporters, my brother Jim. And then in the more political arena, I've had a team or a family that's been great help. They've helped me think things out, and they've helped me speak better and look a lot smarter than I actually am. And that includes folks like Janice Freezen, Kristi Zukovich, Vera Bothner, Cheryl Wolford, Bert Denny, and Bill Buchanan, our county manager from a year or so ago. Great folks who helped me be better. And then our Sedgwick County organization in general. You know, we've got a great potential and great opportunity here with the folks that we have currently in place. Our manager, Tom Stoltz, and all his assistant managers and department heads and division leaders, and all of our employees and staff here at Sedgwick County. I mean, these are intelligent, educated, dedicated, hard-working people, and that's what has made county government an outstanding local government. And then I think probably I would, cannot forget Lisa and Carol, the two in our office, our administrative assistants. They've been great at helping us be on time, stay organized, get where we need to be. And I can't remember if they chew us out, slap us around, but that's probably in there somewhere. But Lisa and Carol have been great for 16 years. I really appreciate them. But I believe we have some challenging opportunities ahead of us. We need to stay focused on jobs, education, public safety, addressing serious mental health needs in our community and in our state, and we need to continue our attention on the quality of life and the amenities that we have here that attract and retain businesses and business talent. So, I would say that despite politics at the state and national level, local governments have always been in a position to make a direct impact on people's lives. And I'm proud that all our employees and the teams that we have here that have worked to make Sedgwick County successful and the ability to attract and retain businesses. So, Karen, have I been So Karen, have I been proud members of Sedgwick County all of our lives, and we want to continue to be. We thank you for the opportunity that we've had to serve, and God bless you all.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Unruh. While he's winding his way up here, the one advantage that I've had over the last two years is that he was the most senior member in more than one way, and unfortunately, with his departure, I pick up one of those medals. But I certainly do wish both Commissioner Ranzau and Commissioner Unruh godspeed in the future, and you'll still be in our prayers and thoughts. As long as we're on other, I know that we've got a reception that started one minute ago, so I'm not going to dwell too much, but there are a couple things that are coming up that I want to make sure that everyone's aware of. First of all, we have the commissioning of the USS Wichita this weekend. You can go over to Century 2 and watch that. There's some information online about how that you can watch the commissioning ceremony. That will happen, and I've got the date right this time, on the 12th, on Saturday the 12th. So we look forward to that. If anyone is interested, they do have a painting of the USS Wichita that's available, artist proof. They only made 13 of those, and I think nine of them are still available. So if anyone wants to spend $250 for a artist proof, there is a non-artist proof that's also available, a print, and I think we printed 250 of those. And off the top of my head, don't know what the cost of those are, but they're nominal in price, but the profits of that go to supporting the crew onboard the USS Wichita. So we just want to remind you that that commissioning ceremony is coming up this weekend. A couple things that are happening in the near future that are of importance. On the 18th of this month, out at the Dole Center at McConnell Air Force Base, they're going to rename one of the rooms in there, the Bleckley Room, in honor of Lieutenant Bleckley, who lost his life during World War I, Medal of Honor winner. So that's something that is important that's coming up. And even more important than that, there's an award that is given to Air Force bases. It's an Insulation Excellence Award, and this year, that award is down to two bases, McConnell Air Force Base against Ramstein Air Force Base. And I was stationed at Ramstein, even though I live here in Wichita, I was never stationed at McConnell. But the thing that McConnell has that Ramstein Air Force does not have is a community that supports them. So if you see a group of folks in town, and there's going to be a dinner one night over at Cowtown, and then they're going out to Yaya Bistro for lunch one day, but if you see some of those folks, tell them what a great organization that McConnell Air Force Base is, and they have 100% community support behind them, and we wish them the greatest luck and well-being in this award. It is very prestigious. One base in the entire United States Air Force gets it each year, so we are rooting for McConnell Air Force Base. But with that, I don't have anything else. Do any of the commissioners have anything else for other? I know we've got a reception we need to get to. Seeing nothing? We do not have an executive session today. We've got a reception. Please join us there, and we are adjourned.
Production and broadcast costs for Sedgwick County Commission meetings have been underwritten by Sedgwick County. KPTS welcomes comments from the public on its broadcast of the county commission hearings. Viewers are invited to write to County Commission Broadcast, KPTS, 320 West 21st Street, Wichita, Kansas 67203.